Annual Actuarial Evaluation Report as of August 31, 2017. Paul has given you electronic version and a hard copy version. And before you is also kind of the PowerPoint summary that Pat will walk through. We'll go through that. We've entertained questions as we go, knowing that you've given us, you know, an hour's time or less, probably in respect of your calendars. Okay? With that, let Pat begin.
Right. Thanks, Dick. As he said, any questions, go ahead and feel free to stop as we go along. We'll just resolve those. Hopefully, this is less painful than having to read the 50 some-page report. So I'm on page two. Just a little bit of a reminder, this plan is a defined benefit plan, so it's very long-term in nature. When we project benefit payments out, there's some benefit payments are expected to be made almost 100 years out. So it's very long-term. We're using a number of actuarial assumptions to help us estimate the amount and timing, duration of those benefit payments. We know, or we hope, that those are accurate over the long term, but from year to year, we know there's going to be deviations. So every time we do evaluation, we capture all the experience that just happened in the last 12 months, recalibrate, and kind of set the contribution on those results. Another part that's important in evaluation is laying these results side by side, year after year after year, to see if there's any kind of a trend that we want to get out in front of and discuss with you. So when you make changes generally, the less severe they have to be. So the valuation is done annually as of October, August 31 of each year. And we're kind of monitoring the funding progress in a couple of different metrics that we'll discuss. And then, hopefully, very importantly to you guys, looking at what the actuarially determined contribution for the city will be in the following fiscal year. So page three, what we call a snapshot of the system on a single point in time. And again, that point in time is the valuation date, August 31. We do those every year, just like you usually go to your doctor and get a checkup every year, monitor things and make sure everything is not out of line or unexpected. Again, I mentioned that we use actuarial assumptions to help us estimate the future benefit payments because, quite frankly, we don't know what they are. They're contingent on a number of unknown events. But we do an experience study about every five years where we look at all those assumptions that are used and try to make sure that they're still our best estimates. And if they're not, you know, we come up with a recommendation and, with your approval, adopt a new set of assumptions. So we're always recalibrating. That's the process. The assumptions have a significant impact on the results. You've seen that over the last couple of years when we lowered the assumed rate of return to 6.4. You know, that makes the liabilities higher, the funded status lower. Likewise, when the Cola Pool Fund merged, we went back to 7.5, made the liability calculation lower. So that's important just to recognize, since we don't know what the right answer is 30 years from now, we know that there's some variation in those. If you use different assumptions, you have different results. All right. Page four. I'd always like to point out if there have been any changes since the last valuation because we will see, we always compare current year to the prior valuation. The only real change this year was City Ordinance 20495, passed in May of last year. And that modified the funding policy, if you'll remember. And it's really, I think, the intention was to strengthen the long-term funding of the plan and sort of guarantee that the actuarial contributions would be made. Part of the funding policy is the amortization policy. So we have something called an unfunded actuarially accrued liability, which means at this point in time, our assets are not equal to the liability that theoretically should be there in the fund. And it's like any other debt, we just need a plan to extinguish it. And this is, the amortization policy is how will that debt be paid in the future? So we went with something called a layered amortization. You probably remember this discussion from last year, where we now, before, we just always had one number, one unfunded liability, and it was amortized over X years. Now we're moving to where we sort of have pieces or layers. So the existing base is what we're calling a legacy. It's a legacy because it already existed, okay? And that is going to continue to be amortized or paid off over the initial 30-year period that began in 2014. We'll get to 2044. I won't get to share that good news if you can hear. I don't even know if I'll be here while working, but that unfunded liability will be paid off if you continue to put in the actuarial contribution. As I said, assumptions are inherent in nature, so we know every year there's going to be variations. When we do an experience study, if we change the assumptions, there'll be a new piece of unfunded liability. Those new pieces are amortized on their own separate schedule, okay? The experience gains and losses are amortized over a 20-year period that begins on the valuation date that we measure that experience. Okay? So when we measured experience from September 1/16 to 8/31/17, that experience, that base, is set up August 31 of '17 for 20 years, looking forward. And every year, we're going to have at least one base. So as you think about it 10 years from now, we're going to have multiple bases. It's not that, it's hard to talk about, it's a little easier to see, but if you visualize it, there's pieces of UAL, and each one has a payment. And we sum up the payments, and that's a total UAL payment. We divide it by expected payroll, and that would give you your, the rate contribution on the unfunded liability. So all that is institutionalized in the funding policy now. And then, the city contribution is really the, and we talk about that in terms of the actuarially determined employer contribution, or the ADEC. It's essentially the employer normal cost plus that amortization payment on the unfunded actuarially accrued liability. If and when the plan is 100% funded or better, the employer normal cost will continue to be paid until such time that the surplus is 115, isn't it? 15%. So what we're doing is trying to provide for years, like we had in '08, '09, where, you know, things can look really good and when, that surplus can go away. So we're building up, protecting the funding so we don't have wide swings in the contributions. And, you know, also, the administrative expenses that are paid are part of that ADEC contribution. So you'll see those numbers in a few minutes. Page five is kind of any key number in the valuation that any, well, an actuary would be interested in. And again, comparing the '17 valve to the '16 valve. So the third row down, the unfunded actuarially accrued liability, that's a number that gets a fair amount of attention. Again, we're funding the benefits while active members are working, with the idea being that if those contributions go in and the assumptions are met, when that person retires, there's enough money in the trust fund to pay them until the last payment, if they're recently died.
So this number here on page five in that third line, unfunded AAL, that includes the legacy plus unfunded liability for '15 and '16 and through the latest valuation. Is that right?
We just implemented the layered amortization. Great question, by the way.
Thank you.
We just implemented the layers in the '17. So we're calling it legacy, the amortization period started in '14.
Okay.
So that is 27 years, but the legacy is basically what was there in the '16 valve.
Okay. So then, going forward.
And then we have a new piece for '17 experience.
Okay. And we'll go, as we go forward, we'll see that incorporated in, or will it be broken out?
No, this is in total.
Okay.
Let me give you a quick, if you looked at page 22 in the actual valuation report, you'll see the layers.
Great.
And it's not really exciting this year because there's two layers, but it will get more exciting in a few years, I promise. I bet you have different pieces. But you can see, like, the 2017 experience base was a gain, that's why it's in parentheses.
Gotcha. Okay.
So it's actually lowering kind of the legacy yield.
Thank you.
All right. So again, we're funding this over a working career. The actuarially accrued liability is that amount that should be in the trust fund if all the contributions have been made and all assumptions have been met. So we're $285 million as far as that actuarially accrued liability. The smooth value of assets, we'll talk about that in a minute, we are not using pure market value, is $230 million. The shortfall, the difference, is $55 million. Held pretty steady from last year, which may not feel really good, but remember, we're amortizing the unfunded liability over a long period, the legacy over 30 years, with 27 remaining, with payments that increases dollar amounts. That means in the early, about the first half of that period, we're not putting a payment in that covers the interest on the unfunded. So it normally would go up. So the fact that it's steady is a good thing. And you can see that there was, again, there was a gain this year that helped keep that pretty darn steady.
Pat, you said we're not funding the interest or we're funding the principal?
We're not funding any principal, and we're not even covering the interest on it by design. To get down to about 17 years, like 30-year amortization, you're not covering it because that, you bring so much in towards the end and pay it down by design.
And so that's going to be a higher contribution for the end, for those?
Dollars. The idea behind this is you're funding it as a level percent of payroll, and payroll's expected to increase as long as your population is stable. It's going to go up at least with inflation, and usually with inflation, a little bit of productivity. So since the wages are expected to increase, the level percent of payroll will bring more money in each year as payroll goes up. And that's why it's financed that way.
So right now, let's see, the total city was 17 some percent. Let's talk in dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So what are we looking at on the, this 2017 year? How much of that is going to the unfunded liability, the accrued actuarial liability?
What might be helpful, um...
Do you want to wait till we get through your executive summary?
Well, the dollars are going to go up 3% each year on the pay.
Which dollars?
The payment on the unfunded liability. Maybe if you don't mind.
If you want to finish, maybe it'd be better if we finish that.
Okay, let's circle back.
That's fine.
It's a good idea, in case you guys are short on time. So the unfunded actuarially accrued liability is the difference between the first and second line. The funded ratio is assets divided by actuarially accrued liability. So the funded ratio using the smooth value was 81% this year compared to 80 last year. If we looked at market value, it would be 82% this year and 79% last year. And that's a little bit of an insight into we had strong investment returns, better than the assumed rate that drove that. But with smoothing, as you know, you know, it gets sort of masked because we've got five years of experience getting blended in that calculation. In the bottom section of that table on page five is looking at, again, the actuarially determined employer contribution rate. So everything, both the normal cost and the unfunded liability payment, is determined, trying to keep the rate level, okay? Dollars will increase, but the rate would be level. So you can see, normal costs held pretty darn steady. The unfunded amortization is down a little bit because payroll is up. And then, I mean, you can see the actuarial, total actuarial contribution rate, very stable. Employee contribution rate, we'll talk about in a minute, and we subtract the employee contribution from the total to get the employer piece. So it's down, it was 17.32 last year, down to 17.08. So that's kind of the high overview. Basically, everything stays pretty comparable when we look at the metrics. When we look at the unfunded actuarially accrued liability, the funded ratio, and the actuarial contribution rate. So let's look in a little bit more detail. Page six, just looking at the membership. Again, active members, the number of members in drop, the inactive vested, all pretty steady. The number of retirees, disableds and beneficiaries, what we would call our in-pay group, up a little bit under 3%. That's not unexpected. That's why we want to fund in advance. You don't want to be doing pay-as-you-go. So no surprises or, you know, anything to be concerned about in particular on that page. Page seven's kind of...
Pat, could you define the difference between, clarify between drop members and inactive vested?
Sure. So drop members are those who have elected to participate in the Deferred Retirement Option Plan. So they're actively working, but from a plan perspective, they look like retirees. Their monthly payment is going into a drop account that they've not received, that they will when they actually terminate employment. An inactive vested person has worked long enough to be entitled to a benefit when they reach retirement eligibility, but they're not there yet, okay? So somebody, the vesting, ten?
Ten years.
So somebody who works for the city 10 years as a police officer and leaves to go somewhere else, they can draw a benefit once they reach 55, 50? Okay. That's why Paul has to be here. Once they're 50, they could elect to draw that retirement benefit. That's an inactive vested. They're inactive, they're not actively working for the city, but they're vested, meaning they have a right to a benefit in the future. Okay? All right. Page seven, and I know we've talked about this before, we have different benefit structures covering different employees that are in this plan. And part of the benefit structure is a difference in employee contribution rates. So you can see in the far left-hand column, broken down by both police and fire members, the number of bodies in each, covered by each plan, what the corresponding employee contribution rate is in that benefit structure, and then, how much of the total payroll is covered by that group? And then, the effective employee contribution, you'll notice there's several that are zero because employee contributions stop either after 21 years in Plan B and C or 26 years in the old plan.
Actually, oh, yes, that's right. Yes, the old plan.
Okay. So we have a number of people who are not contributing at all. And that's why you look at the far right bottom number, 7.20, that's the effective employee contribution rate, the blended rate. Over time, as these people in Plans B and C and the two they're hanging on from their old plan, as they leave and are replaced with people that are covered in Plan A, that 7.2 is going to trend to 8, okay? It just going, it takes a little bit of time to get there. And we're seeing that when we looked before at the employer normal cost compared to the total, you might remember that the employee contribution rate did go up. Page five was 7.06 last, in the last valuation, and 7.2 in this valuation. And we would expect that to continue to creep up until it's 8.
All of those contributions that the employees make, are those after-tax, like the street tax?
Page eight. I mentioned earlier, we do not use pure market value in our calculations. Volatility inherent in market value returns, as you well know, would translate to very erratic contribution requirements, which is usually not a positive thing when you're trying to budget. So we try to use an actuarial tool that kind of averages out the highs and the lows and gives it some time to, rather than have spikes and valleys, we're trying to kind of cut through the middle. We're using a five-year smoothing method, where we're just smoothing the difference between what's expected to be earned and the actual dollar amount of return. Five years is the most common period that's used by public plans, so you're very mainstream on that. Slide nine, so we'll have to visualize the breakdowns up here, looking at the rate of return. So the straight green line is the assumed or the expected return, which has been 7.5 all but two years, 2015 and '16, 6.75 and 6.4. In those two years, mostly, those were reflective of when the Cola Pool Fund was sort of taking a portion of the return off. As you can see, the blue line is the return on market value. The red line is return on the actuarial or the smooth value. And even though the red line is not perfectly parallel to, and tracking with the green line, it has far less movement in it than the market value. So that's exactly what we would hope to see using that tool, that it's, again, it's going up and down, but not the peaks and valleys that you see in the blue line. Page 10. So we use the actuarial value, the smooth value, in all of our calculations, so it's important to know what the market value is. That's sort of the true value on the measurement date. And so this table just shows you both market and actuarial value. Couple of things to notice, if you look at the August 31, 2016 dollar amounts, you'll notice that the actuarial value was higher than the market value by about $3 million, okay? And that's going to happen with smoothing theoretically over a long period, half the time. But if you look at August 31, '17, you'll see now that the market value is higher than the actuarial value by about $3 million. Again, very strong return, 11.25, I think, is the actual number for rate of return for fiscal year '17 on market value, because we had other years that were not, that were below the expected return. On actuarial, it was 8.2. Now, 8.2 is still above 7.5, so we will have a gain. You don't see a dramatic shift there because basically, this gain is helping to offset some of those losses that we had during the '16 valuation. That difference is going to flow through the smoothing method over the next four years. There's nothing magical about smoothing it, that timing mechanism, but this is why you do it, so that when you have years that are under 7.5 and we have years above, it kind of mitigates that up and down. Page 11, you saw these numbers on the first table that we looked at with all the key metrics. Again, the unfunded liabilities, $55 million, held pretty steady from last year, funded ratio up a little bit. And again, we're not going to see dramatic shifts usually when we've got smoothing going on. You're only going to recognize a fifth of that, you know, we truly over 7.5. Page 12 is looking, again, funded ratio is actuarial assets divided by actuarially accrued liability. And if we looked further back than 2001, the plan has been, you know, well-funded for really most of its lifetime, so to speak. We kind of see this downward trend that starts, you know, in 2009 and continues, and a lot of that is what happened in fiscal year '08 and '09 with investment return being recognized over five years. So again, that's, it takes some time for that to all work through. And then, we had assumption changes that lowered the assumed rate of return in the '14 and '15 valuations, which further depressed the funded ratio. And then, in the 2016 valuation, when the Cola Fund was merged into the regular pension fund, it went back to 7.5. You rarely will see a funded ratio go from 64 to 80, I'll just tell you. It doesn't, unless there's some dramatic change, like in the assumptions. And that's what happened there, because when you go from 6.4 to 7.5, that's a huge change to the positive. And then, again, this year, held pretty steady. Page 13, you know, we can look at the components of change between the unfunded actuarially accrued liability in the '16 valuation and the '17 valuation, you know, what happened to change it. Again, the net change was very small, but there's some pieces there. Again, there is an expected dollar amount of increase from the amortization. We talked about that earlier, that when your scheduled payments are increasing as dollars over a very, very long period of time, initially, in about the first 15 years of that period, you're not covering any principal nor the full interest on the unfunded, so it's going to go up by design. You can see we had a gain on investment experience, that number's negative, but we had a loss on liability, but just, those two were almost equal. About half of that liability loss was due to mortality, which means, in general, people were living longer, not as many departed as the table, mortality table would have expected. Kind of a relatively small group, so it's not unusual to have gains or losses, either one from year to year, because you need really large populations for probabilities to, you know, work out as expected. So we need to just monitor that from year to year. If we saw consistently that there were mortality losses, that's just an indication that when we get ready to do the experience study, we might need to strengthen the mortality assumption.
Would you refresh us on which mortality table you're using?
I will.
I think it's like a couple years, if I'm not mistaken.
If I refresh my memory. Okay, I thought that was it. So we're using the RP 2000 mortality table with what's called a generational mortality improvement, okay? That means the table was created around mortality experience in 2000, but every year since 2000, we've anticipated improvements, so that, and every year, they're different. So then, we're really using the RP 2017 version of the RP 2000 table. It gets, these tables get hard to track unless you really follow mortality, and most people don't, but you can. And so I wouldn't want you to look at it and say, oh, my gosh, we're using a table that's almost 20 years old, because we've anticipated that mortality is going to improve every year from 2000 to 2017 and every year beyond, okay?
Are you referring to a table that's actually in the larger report?
The table itself is not.
Oh, okay.
The disclosure of the mortality assumptions on page 50.
Okay, thank you.
If you wanted to see it, you could Google it, and the Society of Actuaries would have that on their website.
Right. So I love this executive summary, but just for the future, I wonder if it wouldn't be helpful to us to reference pages in here in the summary packet?
Sure.
Because I, I mean, I know that you're able to go back and forth, you're pretty knowledgeable about where everything is.
Sure, that's a great idea.
It's a little hard for me to digest in a short period of time, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Pat, you made the, oh, I'll let you finish your note there. You made the comment to Cindy that you thought the RP 2000 with the generational improvement was about the same as the RP 2017? Because I thought last year, you said, we're still lagging.
Yeah.
For public work, public service workers.
Yeah. So this is going to be a little technical, apologize. So the Society of Actuaries issued a new table, RP 2014.
It's a lag. There's usually a lag.
Yeah, there's always kind of a lag between the time, by the time they get everything together and get it tested and smoothed and, yeah. So they published that, and it had a different projection scale with it as well, okay? So mortality tables kind of have two pieces, the basic probability of death at that point in time, which was 2014, and how's it going to improve going forward. So the table we're using would not have, would not anticipate longevity quite as long as the RP 2014 table with its projection scale. But my point was that we're not using a table from 2000. It gets misunderstood, and I just want to be sure we're clear on the record, that we are using a table that was published in 2000, which was the most recent until they published the 14 table. But we're projecting mortality improvements all along. So the rates we're using now in this valuation to start with are lower, meaning people live longer than the RP 2000, okay? Okay? And we're anticipating continued improvement in the future.
So how does, where you're at with this generational adjustment compared to what an RP 2017 table says?
Well, there is, there isn't an RP 2017 table, there is an RP 2017 projection scale.
Okay.
Now they're changing that every year.
How do we compare to that with your generational adjustment to 2000?
That table would anticipate people living longer than what we're using. The question is, is that appropriate for this population, particularly public safety?
So you're clarifying, you're earlier stating, I just misunderstood you then, that we were about the same as the 2017 table, but really we're not, we're still less. I know we've discussed some of that in the past, some public service workers.
Yes, and I, I can see where my comment was misleading.
I just probably misunderstood.
Yeah, no, I think you maybe know too much. But yeah, essentially, the newest table would anticipate people living longer than what we're using. But until we do an experience study, we won't make a decision as far as whether that change should occur for funding purposes or not. And that's part of why we do experience studies. Those tables don't come out on a regular basis.
You also mentioned when you talked about the 1.5 liability experience, that half of it was due to mortality, longer life. What was the other half due to?
Yeah, you're going to be sorry you asked. Paul will help me out if I get stuck. So we talked about employee contributions. So employees putting contributions while they're working, interest is credited on those contributions. When they get ready to retire, they're essentially guaranteed to receive a benefit amount that is at least equal to their account balance, their employee contributions with interest when they retire. Okay? We call that remainder refund. They, they get a refund. When we first started doing the valuation, remember, this is our third year, this feels like forever for you guys probably, but we got that data from prior actuary, and we've just been kind of rolling it forward. Paul really took the time, dug in, went back and kind of cleaned up that day, piece of data. And so we're using better data this time. Unfortunately, lots of times, better data means higher liabilities. And that was about 0.4 of the total. And we also had a loss from disability. Young person?
Yeah, we had a, a young person become disabled.
Yeah. So those were the three, mortality, the data refinement, and the disability experience. Okay?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome. Page 14, we looked at the historical graph of the funded ratio to give assets divided by liabilities. This is the same information, but the difference between the two. This is the unfunded actuarial preliability. Again, the early part of this period, very, very small. Again, from 2009 to 13, as we were recognizing the investment experience from fiscal year '08 and '09, through the smoothing process, we saw that increase. It took a, you know, big hit in 14 and 15 with the assumption change, the investment return change, and then big decline in 16 when the, the Cola Pool Fund merged with the regular pension fund and we went to seven and a half. We brought in more assets and we did liabilities in that transaction. So this is just a really good lesson, that you really have to dig into the details when you look at anything historical or if you compare with other systems, it's just, it's just not simple. A lot of people would like to boil everything down to one number, and it's either within the same system, you have to kind of know what's going on to interpret the numbers.
Another question, Pat.
Sure.
With that Cola merger, part of that was in our legislation, was to have the plan itself then accept that liability to pay what had been funded out of Cola Fund.
Right.
And of course, the Cola Fund did have some existing funds in it.
Right.
So am I correct in understanding you have now, in your actuarial valuation, added the guarantee by the basic plan of those Colas?
That has been in since the 16 valuation.
Okay, and is that?
That obligation to pay the, the Colas is part of the liabilities of the plan. I don't remember if we quantify that separately or not.
Does that could have an impact on, on some of the actuarial liability and contribution rate?
Yes, but I don't think we have that separated because it's kind of valued, I mean, it's just a stream of benefit payment.
On the executive summary, page 13, would that be in any of those categories you have there in 16, 17?
No, because in the 16 valuation, that was already in that number. And this is a, I mean, again, the unfunded would be, the, the promise to pay those benefits is in the liabilities, and the assets that moved over are, are in the asset value, so the net change, you don't have a 16 valuation, do you? 20 mil, 12? Do you remember what that net impact was to the better?
13 and a half.
13 and a half million? So when, when, in 16, when we swept the liabilities and the assets over, we brought over assets and we're.
So we went down 25, but we came back up 13?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, page 15. So this is the ADAC, this is the reference in the funding policy to the city's contribution. So remember, we have really three parts with administrative expenses, but that's not part of the claim. We've got the normal cost, which is just the ongoing cost for active members. We're funding the benefits while people are actively working, so everybody who's employed by the City of Lincoln and covered by this plan on August 31, 17, has a normal cost. So that has to be paid, and then kind of the debt payment on the unfunded liability, this is, this is the second key piece. We already talked about how those payments are determined, level percent of payroll, expecting payroll to increase 3% each year. So the dollar payments increase 3%, the payroll increases 3%, life is good, and the rate is stable. Okay? The payment still goes up 3%. If payroll doesn't go up, then the rate is higher. Payroll goes up more, the rate is lower. And we talked about the layers that we, are new pieces, whether they're gains or losses either one, or amortized over a new 20-year period starting on the valuation date where we measure it. We let the existing UAL that was there, 83116, continue to be paid on its schedule.
Pat, you said just a second ago that if we have a 3% assumption on wage increase, but you, then I believe you said if it didn't go up 3%, that would, so we wouldn't have a higher, a percentage of higher salary, then our contribution would go up?
The dollar amount of the UAL payments going to go up 3%. Okay? Now, you, every year you're going to have a new piece of experience that we don't know what it is, but let's just look at what we have.
So on that, if, if you don't have the salary increase 3%, yes, you're getting about 7 or 8% of the less compensation, so we have to put more in the city. But if the salary doesn't go up, then that means the ultimate benefits are not going to be up.
That's right. That's right. You get a, you get a trade-off, you get a lower UAL, but your payment is another piece of ver, the variable. It kind of depends on how big your UAL is, whether it benefits you or not. Because remember, when you have lower pay, it only impacts the benefit for active members. Right? The people in pay status don't have any impact on them.
So where we're at on our 54 million of unfunded actuarial liability, is that lesser salary increases, that can have a bigger impact? If it were 5 million? I guess it'd have a bigger impact, just kind of trying to understand how much.
Yeah, the hard part about it is, you've got one going down, and, and then the rate is impacted, and it, there, it's frustrating for us, too, there's no rule of thumb. I mean, there's no easy way. What we can do is just say, if this, then this, and run kind of a sensitivity analysis. But it isn't a win-win, because you think lower salaries, lower benefits, lower liabilities, but then, oh, I'm funding it based on payroll, which is also now lower, so I might need.
As amazing as this is, we've already been here for 40 minutes.
Sorry.
And we have 20 left, and so I'd like to.
Got you.
Hold questions if we can until we finish the presentation.
Okay, and we don't have too many pages left. So page 16, again, the ADAC, this is, you know, based on the funding policy. The top portion of this table, you can see the total normal cost, this year 16.52, members, that weighted average was 7.2. So that leaves the employer portion of the normal cost at 9.32. The unfunded contribution rate, 7.76%. So the total employer contribution rate, 17.08. Now remember, this rate doesn't apply until September 1 of 18, for that fiscal year ending in 19. We have kind of a one-year lag here. We take that rate and project payroll forward. Our estimate for payroll's just over 46 million. That gives us an employer actuarial contribution of 8.3 million. So the rate is down, but the dollar amount is up. Payroll went up more as a percentage than rate went down. Page 17 is really just a historical recap off a lot of numbers on this page, but again, looking at the actuarial determined employer contribution, third column from the left, the actual contribution, and then the difference between the two. There's only really one number that jumps out at me anyway on the far right-hand column, and that is for the fiscal year beginning September 1 of 15. It would have been based on the 14 valuation. And I believe that that's when discussion was going on about potential changes with the plan and the Cola merger and how that would lower contributions. So there was a little bit of anticipation there. No for a fact that the, everything was decided, but I think everybody knew it was heading in that direction, so rather than put in 9.7 million, the 7.2 went in. Other than that, you can see some years a little above, a little below, at least they're offsetting. And on page 18, probably one of the most important pages for you as council members, this is kind of the five-year budget estimate. So the first year is based on this valuation. Remember, we said the 17 valuation applies the contribution for fiscal year end 19. You can run that number across, we just looked at that 8.33 million. So that's recommended for fiscal year 19. We've projected out the other years, assuming all assumptions are met. And we know that that's a big assumption, there's a lot of assumptions, but investment return is the big one. So this assumes we're going to earn seven and a half each and every year going forward. We might one year, but it's not going to be seven and a half for four year, four or five years. But you can at least see the trend, if the assumptions met, you know, the employer normal cost rate is expected to go down, because the employee rate is going to be creeping up a little bit every year as we move towards eight. If you look at the ADAC rate, it's generally coming down, 20, fiscal year end 21, it goes up a little bit, but generally that's trending down. The employer contribution amount, again, the, even if the rate is holding steady, the dollar amounts are going to go up as payroll goes up. Okay? And it bounces around a little bit, because we're recognizing each year of investment return that's deferred, and so it moves a little bit where it's going up, and then further up, and then it kind of stabilizes around 8.8 million. So it's helpful, but I wouldn't, you know, hang your hat on, on the number for FY '23. A lot of things are going to change before that valuation is completed and the number's finalized. Page 19 is to wrap up. Really not a lot of changes this year. The funding policy was, was key, but there wasn't any big switch there that had a dramatic impact on the contribution. The investment return, again, was very favorable on market value. That's the single biggest event that impacts these plans in their funding. Investment returns are strong, contributions go down, and vice versa. We saw that in, boy, you don't mind. You're only going to pay benefits with investment returns or contribution. So when returns are up, contributions are down, vice versa. Okay? It is good to note, though, that in the 16 valuation, again, we had that unrecognized or deferred investment loss. Actuarial value's higher than market, we'd flip that. Right or wrong, it always feels better when actuarial value's lower than market, because we know we have a little bit of room there. So again, everything held very steady this year, funded ratio, contribution rate. But as we look forward, we know that the actual investment return from year to year is going to have a dramatic impact on the contribution requirement, so we know that volatility that's involved, even with smoothing, can, can move the dial pretty significantly. So we're going to be aware of that if we try to manage and budget for these plans.
Okay. Questions? Cindy?
So I'm just wondering, from this page 18, the five-year budget request estimate, when we're looking at the 18, 19, and 19, 20, then that's what we can expect to be the recommended funding to come out of our budget for these next two years?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No question follows up on that one, and that is what is currently the line item for those, for the pension. It looks like 7.97 million for 2016, which would be about a $400,000 difference, but what is the other line for the current biennial? To, place, what is the actual number, placeholder?
I think the 19, 20 fiscal year budget request is 8,431,000.
I'm trying to understand the delta between the upcoming biennial budget request for that line item and the current biennial budget.
Okay.
Contributions.
7.9 million as the current, sounds correct, but I don't have that in my memory. But I do know that the, the number on this page, 8,330,000, give or take a couple thousand dollars, is going to be the request for the 18, 19.
Well, the delta, I guess, would be the difference between 7, 9, and 8, 3, or $400,000.
But it's likely to be at least $800,000 over two years?
No, I'd say 400,000.
But I mean, over two years.
No, I mean, it's going, next, 18, 19's going to be 8.3, so it's going from 7, 9 to 8, 3, so there's 400,000. And then up another 100,000 in 19, 20. So I guess it'd be 500,000.
So four and five, 900,000.
Oh, what if you add the two? I, I see, okay.
Todd?
Okay, I'll do mine quick. Somewhere, I guess you can go back and look at the dollar, I was going to look at the dollar amounts we had on contributions, pre-pool, merger, and post-pool, just to see how much more, because then you do have partial lists there of our active contributions from 2009 that have doubled essentially in employer contribution in eight years. I'll get that there. The, the city contribution, so we have our base contribution, then on top of that, the annual $450,000 administrative expenses added.
That is part of the actuarial determined contribution.
It's less part of like the 8.3 million you're projecting this next time?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and on your one sheet, just on page 10, I think you said 400,000, 0.4, which is actually about 0.4. 450.
Yes.
Anyway, that, that's just mine. A big one was, Paul had mentioned, we have the unfortunate disability situation this year. In the plan, though, you do have a disability assumption. So apparently this, this last year has a disability that has far exceeded your disability assumption.
Yeah, as far as the magnitude of what was expected versus the actual, I don't know, the, the difference was about 300,000. That person's very, very young relative. I mean, remember, you have very small probability of disability applying to every single person. So it, again, it's not unusual when one happens, or one or two happen, that, that you're pretty far off. You know, it's kind of like if you have two people living and a 50% probability of dying, I mean, you're, you're going to be over/under. So we can get that, I mean, we are in the office, we've, we've got the expected, but I'm, I'm guessing it's largely the, the age of the member. Do you remember what their person's?
Their age?
Age.
Thirty-ish?
Yeah, so.
Could you give, give us a history later, Paul, of our disability experiences over years and what we're seeing? And then Paul or Patricia, could you, again, refresh your ones' memory on what happens to be excess?
to the excess gains over the planned assumptions? So in this case, where we're at 7.5%, we got 11.2, so that extra 3.7% doesn't all go to the city's benefit. Could you talk about that sharing that we have with the employees?
Sure.
Well, I mean, that was the COLA.
No?
The 13th check.
Well, did that go away with the COLA where we?
Went away with the COLA.
So that totally proves the city.
Correct. Correct.
Overtime.
That was part of the whole intent.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Carl?
Yeah, thanks, Roy. So kind of back on what Liriam was asking on page 18, this assumes that, that we are hitting that 7.5%.
Correct.
So what happens, you know, stock market's at a record level now, what happens when it tanks, if it tanks? That, that contribution then needs to increase to keep us?
Correct. If the returns are less than seven and a half, those dollar amounts will generally go up. Returns are higher, they'll go down. Again, we're smoothing, so you don't, you don't take the full impact, you know, if there's a correction in the market, you won't take that full impact in one year, but mitigate the, the impact, but generally, again, you pay it with investment return or contributions. So if the investment return is not at the seven and a half, it's lower, then it's going to take additional money coming in, and we're funding those gains and losses over 20 years.
Thank you.
Other questions? John?
On our investment portfolio, and I look at that, I don't know if my colleagues look as much as I do, but we've shifted over time, taken a little more risk, and also diversified, especially into some real estate investments and so forth, and there've been some occurrences here in the real estate market over the last few years, where they've had write-downs of some major commercial properties and all. Can you discuss that, how we're balanced there from the investment side, and what the impact that would have? Because we can't just look at the stock market going up 20%, because we've got the real estate that has been impacted inversely with shopping malls and so forth disappearing.
I didn't bring any investment details with us today. I have page 10, and this report.
This is a big report.
That, what are the assets? Now, this one doesn't get into a lot of detail, I guess I'd have to get back to you to give more detail. I mean, page 11 actually lists debt investments, equity, and then alternatives, and then real estate, broken down, so you can see the diversification there, but in terms of a more specific answer than that, I'm afraid I don't have to do those today.
All right, thank you. Let's take a five-minute break before our next meeting begins. And hopefully, I hope to get rid of that.